Well, feel free to slow me down some, okay? Alrighty, here we go. Yeah. Public comment, any? Radar? Thank you. Consent agenda, shall we accept a motion?
Motion to approve the consent agenda as presented.
We have a motion and a second prior to the motion to approve the consent agenda. Any discussion? Seeing that, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Moving on. Reporter superintendent?
Yes, sir, you're on.
How about that, sir? I think one and only Dr. Winkelman is here. Trail. Due to weather slash illness. Oh, my apologies. We want to thank you for being here over your spring break to present all the wonderful things that are happening at Kentucky Trail Elementary.
Thank you, I think green means on. Okay, good evening. Thank you for having me here tonight. I know it's board appreciation week, so I just wanted to take a minute and start by saying thank you all for everything that you do. I know it's a thankless job at times, so it was nice having Ms. Fletcher out. This past week she joined us and she was able to have breakfast with the staff and we enjoyed having you, so thank you for coming out.
Well, I appreciate the invitation and it was fun, thank you.
So we'll take a couple of minutes and talk about Kentucky Trail. I've had the honor and the privilege of following in Dr. Seilman's footsteps this year. She really paved a great path for success. Yes.
I just want you to know, I'm not being rude, I'm just trying to get all this signed. So, go ahead, I'm listening.
You're good, thank you. I'm happy to report a positive trajectory with our building APR. The rest of this presentation will be a reflection of what goes into that number. But, a couple of years ago, we were at sixty-four point six percent and since then we've grown to eighty-eight point seven percent for this past school year. So there's some really good things happening that I'm happy to share with you over the next couple of minutes. So with our map achievement, if I could stand up, I just want to draw your attention to a couple of things. For third grade for this past year, forty-one percent of our students were at advanced or proficient. Fourth grade, we had forty percent of our students that were advanced or proficient ELA. The part that I want to draw your attention, I don't know the best way to do this, but if you follow this cohort from third grade to fourth grade, that just shows that those students were showing some increased percentages with that. In a similar fashion, you could see from, in math, from third grade to fourth grade, that positive trend as well, where we went from forty point nine percent up to fifty-five point one percent. In order to achieve these scores, we have several approaches that I like to make sure that we have in place. I'm an active member with our collaborative teams, so I meet with our teachers on a weekly basis and we talk about map data, we talk about data cycles, we talk about some of the best practices that we've seen whenever we go through different classrooms and what's really working well in some classrooms and what can we improve upon. Yeah. So attendance, I'll talk about this more with the school improvement section. Twenty-one, twenty-two, we were at three out of four points. Twenty-two, twenty-three, we were at three out of four points in this most recent year. Our percentage of students increased to ninety-two percent. So we received all four of the points last year. This year, as of last week, we're at ninety, we're like at ninety-three point five percent for KT. So still maintaining that high attendance. We want kids in seats, we want kids at school. We know that can bolster student growth, so continuing to make sure that we have different ways to get those kids in to their seats. So the last slide, I want to take a couple of minutes just to go over some different things that we focused our school improvement efforts on. The first one is letters training. We've done letters training throughout the district, I'm guessing that we talked, my elementary colleagues talked about this last month, but we're continuing with that letters initiative to really help these teachers teach kids how to read. And that's, it's powerful because it's differentiated, we provide differentiated instruction for our students and we're differentiating our instruction for our teachers as well. We've got different cohorts of teachers that depending on where they're at in their letters phase, they've been assigned to different elementary schools on our professional development days. During that time, those teachers go to their cohort and they're able to have those conversations depending on where they're at in their letters journey. KT, we have the letters applied that comes out to us, it's not just KT teachers, it's teachers throughout the district at the elementary level. And we've been working with the Missouri Reading Initiative and we're focusing on enhancing our writing instruction for our students because those teachers have been through the first several sections of letters. The next initiative is building thinking classrooms, we started this at the beginning of the year. This is rooted in, we want to get kids engaged with math. How can we really bolster that engagement so that they are active participants in their education? We started with a training at the beginning of the year and since then we've continued to embed it into different professional development opportunities throughout the year. The biggest thing is getting these kids standing up, working around the classroom so that they are part of the process of learning. They're not just sitting there and they're not just the recipients of listening to the teacher work through some exercise. They're more involved with the whole lesson. The teachers not just giving them the information, the teachers not just telling them answers or facts to remember. The teacher might pose some type of inquiry-based math problem where the student has to work through collaboratively different set of exercises to help them arrive at the answer. The teacher kind of stands back as the facilitator. The teacher inserts themselves strategically at different points in the lesson to help them move the students forward in a structured way. The last part is the attendance plan, so we have a tier, a three-tiered approach for our improving our attendance and maintaining that high attendance. Some tier-one initiatives just apply to everyone and that's going to be, I have three faces. Whenever the kids get to school, the students, whether they're walkers, bus riders, car riders, they will get out and they'll see a friendly smiling face. The teacher will help them out of their car, a teacher will greet them off of the bus. The kids then enter the building, they see another face, they see somebody that wants them to be there. And then finally, before they enter their classroom, all of the classroom teachers meet the students at the door and they do a hug, high five, or a handshake. So that's three positive interactions that we've had before the kids even enter the classroom. We continue to lean into conscious discipline as a tier-one resource. So we're really creating those school families so that everyone feels a part, we want those kids to be at school. If that feeling of wanting to be at school is there, then our attendance, that's what's going to guide that academic achievement. Some tier-two things we have in place, so those students that might struggle with attendance, I have my office staff, we pull those students that are at ninety percent attendance or lower and we identify that and then my specials teachers, they will meet bi-weekly and they'll look at the group of students that are below ninety percent and they will meet with those students. I think if I reflect back and I talk to a lot of the students in our building, one of their favorite parts of the day is specials. And connecting with those specials can feel like such a special time that now we have got those kids that maybe they don't want to be at school or they have kind of that ill-feeling towards school. Well, if they know that their PE teacher is going to be there to greet them and see them at the beginning of the day, like that's pretty powerful, I don't want to let my PE teacher down. So we'll do that with our specials teachers as well. I also looked at some data and Tuesdays were our lowest attendance days. So every kid in our classrooms, they all have a classroom number. And on Tuesdays, if you're in your seat at eight-thirty and your number gets called, then you get to come up to the office and you get a special prize. My own two children, they said, Dad, it's Tuesday, we can't be late today, we've got to be there on time. Because I need, if number eighteen's called, that's a big deal. So, and then for our tier-three, those kids that really struggle, I continue to partner with our school resource officer, I make phone calls, I make, I have meetings with them just to make sure that the families understand that attendance is important. So, I think that's it, Ms. Stocking? Do you have any questions for me?
Anyone?
I like the Tuesday thing, that's cool, it's.
The kids love it, it's cute because you'll see, like their numbers get called and they'll just walk through the cafeteria and they're just so excited and they're beaming and it's like a bracelet, it's just a little, you know, oh yeah, they love it though.
I had attended a meeting for the counselor earlier this year, did we get that question answered for her?
We did. Yep. Yep, we figured out where the discrepancy was in our system and we fixed that.
Okay. Perfect, well, thank you, as always. We appreciate all your hard work and it sounds like everything's going well, so we appreciate it.
I was going to say, did you take notes?
Thank you.
And, and Dr. Winkelman, you don't, you don't have to stay, you can go. Only thirty days late, but you know. No one's counting, alright, thank you. E-rate?
Yes, the administration has a proposal that we recommend for the board, we've had some discussion. We receive E-rate funding for technology, a lot of it's for our servers backbone, it's not things that we see, it's not laptops, but it is necessary communication devices, we receive pretty significant amount of funding, but also there's some district funding to go along with. You'll see that there are several breakouts, the total bill on the E-rate is eight-hundred-and-seventy-six thousand, but you'll see they're broke out into some smaller projects that we have across the district. Dr. Poison, anything else we want to highlight? Dr. Obviously he's not here, he's out on spring break, but he did meet with us, we have went over this. It's been kind of planned in the process and I would just remind, this is one of the reasons why we have our sign-ups for free and reduced because that determines what level and how much money we do receive based on our frame reduced percentage and count in the district in regards to helping to pay for these technology needs.
Microphone? Thank you, Daniel.
Said I don't know enough of the terminology that we're contributing the additional district funds to, but it's for the backend switches, is that right?
Yeah, it's the, it's our wireless and the backend switches is basically what we're looking at. All that stuff that's all hidden in the closets or hidden up in the ceiling.
So we can complete that craft, all the buildings in the district.
Okay. This is not the servers that you talked about earlier this year?
No, this wouldn't be the servers, this is the actual, like, we're all the network, we're all the things plug into.
The ports, okay.
The ports there to update those.
Okay.
We have stuff that's pretty old.
And we did receive multiple bids on this project and some positive working relationship with Yellow Dog and experience with them in the past. They weren't the cheapest, they weren't the most expensive, but was somebody who felt not only on-time task, but then, you know, a fair bid in regards to this, so. The administration would recommend the approval of the E-rate as presented.
I make a motion to approve the E-rate proposal as presented.
Second, we have a motion and a second to approve the E-rate proposal as presented, any discussion?
On the monies that we get back, that you've got this five-hundred-and-sixty-one, six, five-hundred-and-sixty-one thousand, six hundred. Do we get more than that? Much, much, much more than that, correct?
I think it's somewhere around the eight-hundred thousand mark.
But yet Yellow Dog charges us eight-hundred-and-sixty-seven thousand?
So with, with, well with E-rate, we have to expend a portion out of local funds to cover, they will not cover a hundred percent. So it's, it's almost like a, it's not a matching grant, but then again, if it's like eighty-twenty, if, they'll allow us to utilize X number of dollars toward, and so we're actually going above that because we're doing a little more than what our match is. I think to the tune of about a hundred-and-sixty thousand. We're doing a hundred-and-sixty thousand over what our required match is, but it really addresses the district as a whole in regards to this, because we were talking about leaving out, I believe, Yocum and maybe part of the high school and another building, if we didn't do that, so it just really made sense to go ahead and commit the additional a hundred-and-sixty thousand dollars. So say you get a million dollars for a project and they're willing to cover eighty percent of it, so the max they're going to do is eight-hundred thousand, but if the overall project is one-point-one million, the extra money's going to have to come out of our pocket. So they're only going to give us so much based on a formula of our frame reduced and the student population we have.
Maybe I'm not understanding it quite right. Where's, the eight-hundred-and-sixty-seven, is that a, that's a quote from Yellow Dog to do the work? And then we're going to get, and then we're going to get five-hundred-and-sixty-something back?
Back on that.
Okay.
And take a hundred-and-sixty thousand out of it, that's a new funds that we're going to put towards it, the rest was already committed in the budget.
Okay.
To be able to get that five-hundred-and-sixty-one back.
Okay.
Have to pay that portion, so we're going to go ahead and commit another hundred-and-sixty in district funds on top of the requirement, do the entire district at one time.
Okay, I, I follow it now.
That's messy, I'm sorry.
Yeah, I was just, to me, the numbers weren't working and.
Right, yeah, because.
You were the rate across the bridge, so it was not.
I think I calculated quickly, the proportion that was in the budget was like seven-hundred-and-seven thousand, we're going to go ahead and do a hundred-and-sixty on top of that to get the whole thing done.
Okay. Perfect, thank you.
Yep. Any other discussion?
So, just because I just don't know technology, are we replacing our Wi-Fi system, is this what this is doing?
Yeah, this will upgrade us to the newest Wi-Fi system. It gives us the smart rate switches that allow for multi-gig to the access point, so we can then give more bandwidth through to the individual students or the individual devices.
It's just the.
We had utilized Aruba in the past and we're switching to.
Juniper.
Juniper?
Yeah.
So it's not the same Wi-Fi? Provider or anything like that?
It's not the same, yeah, we're going to switch to a different vendor.
Well, we have more net as our provider as far as internet, but yeah, Aruba is like a, they were well-matched with Apple initially and was supposedly higher-end. But I know Dr. Arvisi and the tech staff have done the investigation and feel like making a switch is technology's changed since we did that.
Yeah, no matter what we went with, we were going to, like, the lifespan of those devices that are in the ceilings, the access points and stuff, they had, they weren't going to be able to be upgraded to the next version of Wi-Fi and we have different versions of those switches and so the next code release of everything was going to take a bunch of switch, a bunch of those access points out, so we had to start upgrading everything anyways and so it kind of in line with our switches, some of our switches are ten-plus years old, so we'll just kind of add new, just replace all the switching and the wireless to go for the new Wi-Fi seven and things.
How long will they last us? A month and a half?
Yeah, I mean, it's like everything, everything they want, wanted to have a shorter lifespan than we want it to, but it'll five, six years is what it goes out for now.
Okay. Alrighty, perfect. Any other discussion? Seeing that, all in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Passes. Twenty-four, twenty-five calendar amendment.
Yes, our calendar obviously has come under some.
Scrutiny?
Yeah, that as well as.
Whoever made Mother Nature Mad, please apologize.
So, in looking at where, so our current end date as of right now would be May thirtieth on a Friday. However, we do have a Monday after Easter, which is April twenty-first. And so I'm going to recommend that we amend our calendar to change that April twenty-first day, the Monday after Easter to a student day. I feel like it is a more valuable instructional opportunity for our students in April than the May thirtieth day would be. We could then also utilize the May thirtieth day for professional development training for our summer school staff and then we could start summer school on the Monday. That's what we had planned on doing for seeing that we don't have any other school cancellations in that regard, so you will see that counter there, I have talked to some of our representatives in regards to this. Ms. Crumley did talk to the calendar committee, the majority of the calendar committee, I'm going to be honest, is not in favor of us utilizing that Monday. But by presenting this, I believe it is what is in best interest of our students to do this and honestly staff and for summer school in the bigger picture, so.
And what was the reasoning for not supporting that date change?
I think that they had some meetings scheduled. Any other reasons?
Some had made some, raised some concerns that staff had plans on that day, some didn't give much of a reason, they just would say no, but some did poll staff and say, you know, people had an appointment on that day or what have you.
So I guess the question, Boz, is, are you worried about attendance on the twenty-first?
I am worried about attendance on the twenty-first and/or on May thirtieth.
And, and random days in between.
And then you would say, when is summer school slated to start? When's the first day of summer school?
It would be the Monday, June.
Second.
Second.
June, so right into, okay.
Yeah, there is no gap, I mean, we're up against it now. Is there still legislation out there that could potentially pass? There is, House Bill six oh seven, they would have to put emergency clause in, they have tacked on at least four items to that bill already. So the concern is they're going to tack on till it won't pass, that typically is what happens. And so there's concern there, we can't wait on that in essence, so even if they forgave us the days, then in essence we'd get on a Thursday before Memorial Day versus a Friday. So by adding the day on the twenty-first, we're not taking away Good Friday, but adding that day, it would still not, in essence, create a havoc at the end, but it does make an adjustment to the counter on the April day.
Would House Bill six oh seven affect the calendar, just?
It would forgive us in essence four days and so then we could be back before Memorial Day if it were passed and then it has to be on an emergency clause and the governor has to sign it for it to take effect.
Revised calendar also, if we don't revise it this way, STEAM is off on Juneteenth and then they have to come back on the twentieth for their last day of school if we don't do a makeup day, now they're off on the eighteenth. If I'm correct on that.
Well, and they have to make up two additional days because we did have to cancel their attendance.
Right.
So they will be pushed further in to, so it will take away a couple of their summer school days the way we're sitting right now, but Juneteenth on the nineteenth of June does create a situation. When I did talk to the staff at Hillcrest, because there was concern as we were continuously missing that there was discussion that we'd be into July and I said, we will not.
No.
We will not take summer school into July as far as that program is concerned. Do we have driver's ed and other programs that go into July, yes we do. But as far as full-time in essence, in person at the elementary, we would not go into July.
But this plan makes STEAM's last day the eighteenth by making up that Monday, right?
If I cut them out, those two days that we add on, which could affect people's pay, that would be the case, but unless there's something.
Their makeup days are listed here as the twenty-third through the twenty-fifth on the original calendar. If they were having to make up those snow days, so they would make up their snow days with those first four days of their summer school portion and then they would have to finish out the remainder of their school year by making up some of those days counted because they would, so they would possibly have to go beyond the eighteenth.
And they had a longer, a different, another day added because of the power?
They had two days, correct?
Two days because of the power?
Right.
Okay.
If the House bill passes, Dr. Underwood, do they still, would you still have to make up that day on the twenty-first?
Depends how it comes back from the Senate. When we sat through the hearing, it looked like it was going to pass pretty easily, but the Senate, I think, is the one that's changing things. So all it would do is just relieve us of the hope, we just go back to our original calendar because we had scheduled a hundred-and-sixty-nine days. So, but let's see if that gets passed. I know, I think it made it through the House, didn't it, Dr. Underwood?
Through the, I believe, Education Committee hearing, it has. Yeah.
Yeah.
But not as far as a vote to go out of the House.
Passed the House already, it went to the Senate. We'd have to look.
Okay, we have a look.
Okay. Alright, Cheryl, accept the motion?
Motion to approve the twenty-four, twenty-five calendar amendment as presented.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve the twenty-four, twenty-five calendar as amended, any discussion?
Mr. President, I withhold the opportunity to adjust that summer schools' calendar for Hillcrest just to make sure that we count the days because they are different, because they did miss a couple of days. So what it shows here, summer school-wise versus where they are, I think will be different.
Okay.
So we'll come back and to the board with that this next month, but yes, and so it could end up where there are a few extra days there that, what this shows, so.
Okay, but for right now, you're.
As far as regular school, April twenty-first.
We'll, we'll do this calendar amendment as presented and then if you need to do another one, we can do another one next month.
Right.
Or kill a completely of six oh seven goes through.
Yes, which would address summer school.
Okay. Any, everybody alright with that? All in favor say aye?
Aye.
All opposed? Passes. Twenty, twenty-five summer school?
Yes, just going to share a little bit of information about the summer school for the summer, we're already planning that and it will be June second through July tenth and that will be for our Grace. Kentucky Trail will host grades kindergarten through third. Scott will have E S Y. Mill Creek grades four through six, B M S grades seven through nine. And then B H S will run from June second through the twenty-sixth and they will have their normal credit recovery classes, driver's ed which does extend on beyond that so that they can.
And they will have their normal credit recovery classes, driver's ed, which does extend on beyond that so that they can get their driving hours. We have a P E class, a couple of P E classes this year that we're gonna offer, and also some online courses too at the high school. So we will have a busy summer for kids. Info for summer school will be available to parents on Monday on our website. And then, so that's March 24th, Monday. And then we will begin registration. Parents can start enrolling and registering for summer school on April 7th, and that will go through May 2nd. So we look forward to having all of students that want to attend summer school at our summer school programs.
When can staff start applying for summer school?
Staff applications will be up currently now. They were up last week.
Are we moving the, the non-driving portion driver's ed back to the classroom?
It will still be online.
So it's not back in the classroom this year?
No.
Okay.
We have the same three teachers, I think, coming back, so.
Okay.
Any other questions? Graduation requirements?
Yes, I just wanted to bring up a conversation about future graduation requirements. Obviously, we've had the focus for academies now for a number of years with the high school students. One of the next pieces would be to have that as a part of graduation requirement. And so probably have this to the board about three different times over the next three or four months in regards to this. Because what we're talking about will be seniors of the, actually freshman class that will start this next year. So the actual requirement will not be until they become seniors. So they have plenty of advanced notice. And so the, the piece that we would be adding is the market value asset that we do with our academies. And so that a student would have an industry recognized credential, they do some type of job internship or practicum and/or earn nine college credits prior to graduation. And so we would look to add that to go along with what we, the goal is, if you guys recall, is to have 100% of our students by 2030, we want to be ahead of that goal for the metropolitan area that would graduate with an MBA leaving. So in essence, we'd be looking at seniors for, I believe it would be May of 2028. Would be the first time that we would have that requirement official for graduation. So we'll have some more detail. We've talked about it some, but just want to bring that up and see if there's any questions or concerns, comments that we want to talk about, knowing that we'll have a formalized document in front of the board here in the next two months.
Okay. Any questions? Staffing update? Microphone.
Yes, for our staffing, we have nine open positions, but we do have five positions that are going to be filled, which I'm looking at Ms. Prue because they're gonna be special education positions due to critical shortage. So they will be retirees that will come back. They're working for us now. And so they have committed to next year already to do that. So we're very thankful that they're willing to come back and do that for us. But what we, what we're looking at right now, we still do have a fifth grade position at Mill Creek. We've got a third grade position at Kentucky Trail. Special education at middle school and high school as well. I would round out the nine positions that we have open currently. As we're looking to fill those as soon as possible. So a few other notes here, as far as our non-certified for 25, 26, we still do have a social worker position open at Scott. Sped Parrot, the high school, and then the finance secretary at the high school as well. And we honestly still have a few unfilled positions this year of Paris that we've not been able to hire, unfortunately. And, but we have had it. I've actually had the list at my desk of all the positions that we've added for this school year. And I believe we're in the teens. And most of them have been special education positions. But some have been teachers, some have been Paris, and they have been throughout the district. They've been at Grace. Tammy, help me out here as far as some of the other positions that we've added throughout.
At Grace, we've added some. We added one at Scott. We've added two teaching positions and pair of positions in both of the classrooms at district programs. At Kentucky Trail, and then we've added several one-on-one positions for students that moved into the district. So pair of professional positions. It's been, it's, we've opened four classrooms for special ed since we started the school year.
Yes, so unfortunately, we've not been able to fill a few of the pair of positions. We've got three SAC positions open as well currently. So we're doing the best we can trying to, to fill those voids as they've come up. Sometimes it's, it's hard in the middle of the year to find them and some of these positions, we seem to have a high turnover rate with, and we try to fill them. So. Any questions in regards to staffing? Anything I forgot?
Thank you. Career ladder?
Yes.
There's a lot of HR on here for somebody not being here. I'm just saying.
Yes, there is, Mr. President. Thank you for noticing that. We appreciate our Human Resource Assistant Superintendent for all of her wonderful work. And we miss her. More so than you know. No, so this does not take action. This is just for information. So we started Career Ladder of the District, I believe it's been four years ago and it was only a handful of teachers that started with us. We're up to 38 staff that are taking advantage of. And so it's an additional compensation for teachers that take on something above and beyond what they would do in the regular classroom. And so we have some staff that are providing tutoring in addition to what their current position is. Some family community engagement events that they're putting on outside of their regular scheduled events. Some externships where the teachers go out and learn other career fields so they can have a better grasp of that real world learning experience and so they can bring that back to our students. And then also some of them have actually presented information to other teachers in their profession. So kind of like a presenter that we might see at MSBA or some other conference that our teachers have taken that on to provide that expertise as well. So just wanted to share with where we're at and how that is growing in the district. And I believe it is, is it 3,000 and 5,000, depending on where they're at and how much time that they put into that, that they can receive an additional compensation. And so we're thankful our teachers have been willing to do that. And obviously, the district has to commit funds. So thanks to the board for allowing our staff to earn, in essence, that additional compensation.
Okay, any questions? Alrighty. Does that mean transfer?
Yes, so on April 8th, we have a ballot measure and so we have went around and been sharing that information. I know we talked about it last month. We have signs, I believe, from our community committee that is working to do that. So if any board members want signs to put up, I believe they're downstairs. And so we'd be happy to share those out. There's a few of them out. If you haven't seen it, nice little purple and gold spin to those. And so I believe that I'm coming to the city council next week to share that the Parks and Rec presentation the other night and shared there. We've, we've shared with our staff and I know Dr. Poizel shared a couple of times. Appreciate all the efforts that everybody's putting in to try to make sure that our voters are aware of what we're doing and what we're trying to do in some uncertain times that we've seen with the possibility of our finances. And what our legislators will do at Jeff City that could affect us. We're trying to make sure that we're taking care of our folks here. And if Ms. Brown were here, she would say retention is our new recruitment. So I keep utilizing that phrase. And so we want to retain our staff, helping cover benefits, but then also recruit new staff as well. And so we want to be competitive with attracting new staff to the district as well. So it is a, you know, a kind of a concerted effort there to try to make that happen. And obviously, money does matter. That we need it. So to continue to do that. So I'm encouraging everybody to get out. We've got the flyers also. And Ms. Hange, where are we at with sharing our information with our voters via the USPS?
There we go. Okay. I actually just added money to our permit yesterday. So that will be hitting mailboxes. Leave early next week. Informational flyer to every household within our district boundaries.
Good.
And you guys also presented to the Educational Foundation at their board meeting last month, so. I'm correct, right? But Bob and Torrance, or Dr. Poizel and Mr. Allen and there were, Mrs. Stocking, there was a group that came.
Perfect. Alrighty. Any other, any questions?
Do you know that Ms. Hubbard is running our local group is still looking for funds. She's obviously got signs, but also is trying to put some more ads in the paper as well. So if anyone knows anyone that might help her cause, then.
Okay.
See, Ms. Stocking, she's taking care of that for us. Outside of school hours.
Yes. Alrighty.
Ms. Hubbard will take your money as well.
Legislative update?
The spring break theme has continued as Jeff City is also on spring break currently. As we mentioned about the calendar, there are a number of legislative items, open enrollment, which is House Bill 711, has been kind of front and center as far as education is concerned. There's a lot of things that we're hearing will start to push education possibly to the backseat when they're starting to talk more about taxes and rolling back. And so I think that is their plan to really look at more of the budgetary type focus and some plans to remove income tax from the state and a plan to do that. So I think that's gonna take front and center stage when they come back off of their break. And so we'll see where things have been. Honestly, they have been working pretty well together as far as our House and our Senate, which has not been the case over years now. There's been much turmoil there. So I'm not sure what or how or why, but that is the way the first half of the session has been. Of course, they have to approve a budget by that second Friday in May is their statutory requirement, and they've tried to stick to that. And so that will be fastly approaching.
Yes.
And the budget, the budget was still in the House when we went down last week because their software crashed when they were trying to work on it. It's everywhere.
So more to follow on 711, that's for sure.
Yeah, and I do, I was not able to make it down for the MSBA day on March 11th. I don't know if there's any additional information that those that attended would want to share at this time.
You know, I thought that we had a decent conversation were in the hallway. As usual, one of our representatives ignored us. I'll let you guys guess who that is. After the meeting, if you would like me to tell you the, that person's, I almost, I almost left. Anyways, I can tell you that later. On 711, one of our representatives did stick with us. It still passed out of the House, even though they did stick with us. And other than that, I thought the, it's hard to get with some of them. Our state senator, as usual, was not available.
We got to, we got to actually talk to one out of the three that we hope to speak to.
Right.
And well, you'll be surprised, but anyway.
You would be surprised. It was.
And it was.
The one, he didn't listen to us, but we, he at least spoke to us.
And, and I am now educated that Cass Midway is no longer Cass Midway. They are just Midway. And we, we traveled with one of their school board members, really neat guy. And he asked some hard questions that were new. It was a new face asking them, so the responses were still the similar, but, and then I went rogue on my own and spoke to Roger Reedy, who's not one of our, we're not his constituents. But there is a push right now to get driver's ed to be in a regular school year. And so they had their, their hearing last week and he was, his Blake, his aide, whatever, was supposed to get with me on the outcome of that, but I haven't heard from him yet. So I can't give you an update on that. But they're wanting it to be taught in health classes and I don't believe that's the place for it. That's just my personal opinion, so. And they're getting some backing by, from some insurance companies, AAA. So it may get more movement than we expect just because of, of those supporting groups.
Driver's ed.
Yeah, they're supporting it because, so anyway, there's only seven school districts in the state of Missouri that offered driver's ed during the school year as a regular class, so. Okay, so. Oh, I did too. Belton had it back when I was.
All right.
So anyway, so that's kind of.
Stay out of that.
Yeah. I had the shop teacher as my driver's ed teacher. So that's, that's the update on, that's why I ask if we were having it in the classroom during summer. And that's pretty much it for new stuff.
Alrighty. New business horizontal advancements?
Yes, we have two staff members, one from Hook and Steam and one from the middle school. As you see the list, the administration recommends the movement on horizontal advancement as presented.
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve the horizontal advancement as presented. Any discussion? Seeing that all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Passes. Miss Laney has school board recognition.
Yes, Mr. President, from our Missouri School Board Association friends, school leaders devote countless hours to making critical decisions that benefit the public school students in our communities throughout the state. Honor school board members, the entire month of March has been designated as Missouri School Board's Recognition Month. The goal of this recognition is to increase awareness and understanding of the crucial function an elected board of education plays in the success and advancement of our public schools. And a thanks and a shout out to our buildings for recognizing our board members as well for all the thankless decisions and tough decisions that are made and the hours that are put in. So thank you all for that. And I hope you guys enjoy the baskets.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Yes. I would like to thank Hillcrest for inviting me to breakfast with the staff. That's, was pretty nice. I enjoyed that. I don't know, I don't know if they enjoyed it, but I did, so. Committee updates. Belton cares.
Okay, kind of slow. Maybe a night a couple of weeks ago.
And we took second?
I think.
Second place.
We were second. We only had six people. Oh, Ms. Brown's not here.
Russ Richardson's team was first. Yeah. The councilman and his wife and peasants or whatever they call their team. So, and we, we made a little over $3,000. So that was we thought was pretty okay. And Teresa, were you at the meeting last week? Okay, I was, I was actually in Jeff City, so. But we, we have the golf tournament coming up August 9th. We're already starting to work on that. We have after grad in the works, planning for that. We have a teen safety summit where other school districts are gonna come here and have some leadership driver safety stuff, and that'll be at Memorial Station on April 23rd. So, and that's through a grant from MoDOT. So that's kind of what's going on with Belton Cares right now. Kind of slow, but we're moving forward.
Okay, perfect. Let's see, MSBA?
Okay, I went with Jerry last week to advocacy day and we visited and talked around. One of the things that I accomplished that I'm kind of excited about, our robotics program, gracious professionalism is their theme. And so we're working to get Holden, because they have a really good robotics team in Belton. And to be at the showcase at the state conference in the fall together to show that professionalism and how two school districts can work together to achieve. So both of those sponsors are working on that because I want to see Belton in that student showcase again. And I mean, our, our ambassador down there, but having that student showcase is good too. So anyway, so that's kind of it for right now. Summer conference is coming up. All the guys here are going to the national conference so they can report on that when they come back for next meeting.
For the staff, they are already starting to take applications for presenters for the annual conference. I would like to recommend that somebody do something from this district, please. Surprise me who, but somebody should be presenting. please. Surprise me who, but somebody should be presenting at the conference if possible.
I think reviving some of the.
You know who I'm looking at. And so, you know. Yes. Please put that on your agenda.
Yeah.
Because I would like to see us present. All righty. City of Belton? Anything? Nope. All right. How about the Educational Foundation?
Okay. We, I think the big, the big one everybody wants to know, waiting, can hardly wait, especially Karen. This is just for you, Karen. Let me find it. She'll understand when I say it. Turkey Bowl is November 8th. I know you do. That's why I said that. Okay. So we have, we have the gala coming up in August. And of course, that's a super great event, and it's boots and bling this year. You're going to see cowboy boots everywhere. The Pirate Dash 5K Glow Run is coming up April 4th. There, you can sign up still. Saturday at Johnny's Tavern, you can play bingo from 2 to 4, and part of the money from that will benefit the foundation. Price Chopper's doing a food drive March 22nd as well. And then the Cass County Democrats are doing one on the 29th for the foundation. We've, it's still on. Oh. We had You Matter Belton last week. Teresa, you can speak to that a little bit. You were there for that. They've received 22 scholarship applications, so that's a really good number of scholarship applications. Major Saver Card is over. For the most part, we made 13,000. Of that, 6,895 went to the foundation, 6,874 went to local schools. But you can still, they still have cards left if you want to buy one. They're at the foundation office. So that's kind of where everything is right now. So just remember, food drive on the 22nd, charity bingo on the 22nd, Pirate Dash April 4th, Carrie Nation Days, we'll have an alumni event on May 31st, the gala September 6th, and once again, Turkey Bowl is November 8th.
Perfect. Thank you.
And just to chit chat a little bit about the You Matter Day, where everybody, a whole bunch of volunteers posted up at all the different school locations, the front and the backs, make sure we caught all the walkers, car riders, bus riders. We handed out a nice little bracelet to the kids in the morning. That was, that was pretty fun. They were glow-in-the-dark bracelets. And the kids are always surprisingly receptive to that, even though it's early in the morning. And it's just kind of a great way to start their day because they get to see we're out there handing something out, and it just really brightens their day. Even those little middle schoolers, we love them so much. So always a good time. I highly recommend volunteering for that if you haven't gotten the chance to do so. And they do that how many times a year?
Well, we do it monthly, but not in-person monthly. It just depends. Sometimes they give them out in the school, but we try to do quarterly at, at the minimum.
Yeah. Good time, good time.
All right. Perfect. All righty. Some miscellaneous dates. Of course, the MSBA conference starts on the 20th, the Cosmo one, I'm sorry, in Atlanta, in Hotlanta. March 25th is the BHS Choir Pre-Festival Concert, 7:00 PM. The 27th is the Spring Concert for the middle school and high school at 6:00 PM at the high school. April 4th, date change. Like to remind everybody that the Senior Citizen Luncheon is at the, on the 4th, and that's for, at the Fieldhouse at noon. Seniors will get there about 9:30.
Those are the ones running late.
Those are the ones running late. My dad will probably be there about 8:15 calling me, wanting to know where I'm at. Anyways, April 10 through the 12th is the BHS Theater Spring Play, The Plot, Like Gravy Thickens. Okay. Sounds interesting. April 12th is the BHS Theater Spring Play, The Plot, oh, okay, at 7:00 PM. We have those, April 10 through the 12th. April 12th is also prom at the high school at 8:00 PM. Any miscellaneous dates that the chair missed?
Mr. President, I did receive some communication from our student rep. It reminded me about the prom on April 12th. I'd have a little information. I'd be happy to share.
Please do.
So a couple of the big items that, and this comes from Michaela McConnell. She's one of our student representatives. Obviously, they're on spring break this week, but she did take time to, to communicate and wanted to share with the board. She also points out that we have a big test day on April 8th for our students. Dr. Mock, anything you want to share on that as far as our day schedule at the high school? Would you like to share who does what at the high school? April 8th, where we have our test day for our students?
Ready to rock and roll. They have been also working on freshman transition to, and our eighth grade transition on that day as well. So we've got some more activities, more robust versus, for those groups of kids that aren't actually taking some of the big tests.
I like.
I did have something to say.
I like, I like how you were trying to say no and moving on. Even though the boss was saying you will speak. Go ahead.
So also, she wanted to point out some of the organized send-off events that we've had for some of our successful groups, FCCLA, swim, cheer, dance, and wrestling over the last few months. And she also points out that obviously our wrestling team did very well. We had nine state qualifiers, five of them placed. We had two girls that were state champions this year. So super proud of our girls and the boys both, obviously, and their work. And so thankful that they've had that experience. And as we've evolved with what we're providing for activities, not just here at Belton, but also across the state and what we do, because honestly, five years ago, it would be boys wrestling against girls or vice versa. And so now for them to have grown that sport so much that students can wrestle against, you know, male and or female and have, you know, that high level of competition, really just super thankful for that and our kids. And obviously, in the spring, we have boys volleyball. It's getting ready to start up. And so solid triads starting for that. So they're, once again, another new activity that we have for our students as well. Also, she pointed out that she had the opportunity to meet our new principal. We had our new principals over at the high school, had two assistants and our head principal over there. And so a few of the students, but she also would like to see an opportunity for students, more students, to be able to meet our new administrators this year before next year. I don't know if we can pull that rabbit out of the hat, but it's a request that she has made. So we'll look into that and see. And then she also pointed out the girls made the second round of the district tournament this year. First time they've done that since 2020. The boys did lose in the first round, and they finished with a record of 13 to 14 on the year. And let's see. Yeah, I think she mentioned enrollment night for eighth graders that were able to come over and meet new teachers. We just had that occur. But then some of the students, high school students, were able to meet some of the eighth graders that came over as well and thought that was a good experience. And so those are just a few of the highlights that Michaela wanted to share. And so I thank her for putting that together.
I had one more thing on that. Louise Jewett was named Class II Wrestler of the Year for Girls. Whole state of Missouri. Very cool.
Very good. All righty. Anything else for the good cause? The chair will accept a motion.
Second.
I'll second that. All in, all in favor of adjourning?
Aye.
Aye.
Yes, we need to do it by roll call. Jim?
Yes.
Karen?
Yes.
Dave?
Yes.
Mary?
Teresa?
Yes.
Norm?
Yes.
And I'm a yes on the road. See ya.